Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
The time is now 6:30. First up, review changes to the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or adjustments to the agenda? We already have our guests up fairly high, so that should probably go very quickly. Otherwise, we're good? Okay.
Okay.
Scheduled members of the public, we have Dorit Maggio here and LeAnn Parker. Mark Bills is also here, no other scheduled, nobody unscheduled. Moving on to number five, the minutes from April 3rd. Looking at page one, the only couple things I saw on page one were...
Mr. Wyatt.
Mark, under Members of Public, Mark Bills is here. And then, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Nice to meet you.
LEMP review, Mike Wyatt, Mr. Wyatt is spelled wrong, W-Y-A-N-T. Is that way on the second page, too?
Right. So there's a few changes. Anything else on page one for anybody? Here, none. Moving on to page two, anything? There's a Mike Wyatt on that, but I probably just find him in a place in the middle. Anything, I didn't have anything else on page two. Any changes for everybody on page two? Anything on page three? I had no findings. Anything on page four? Anything on page five? All right, anything on page six? Going once, twice. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of April 3rd as amended. Any discussion, all those in favor approving the minutes from April 3rd as amended? If you're by saying not, aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? No? Okay. All right, moving on to new business. First up is the Meeting House.
Hey.
And LeAnn Parker's here from the Meeting House Committee. And what's going on?
Well, yeah, I just thought I'd give the time to the board and all to come in and say hey and introduce myself and kind of little backgrounds. About three years that I've been on the committee. I entered the, it's not, I came in about the time that the application for the windows was approved and the windows were being installed and in the middle of preparing the grant for the heavy timber repair. So it's about reuse in there. And we were pretty active in the beginning. Last year was a little bit slower, fewer on the committee. So I wanted to mention that I talked to Dan. He, I met him at the town meeting. Dan took a nice tour of the building the other day. And we chatted about opportunities to do things with the committee. And he has some nice contacts as far as, is this your brother-in-law that's done some grant writing for historic? Or your brother?
Well, my brother, who's in Northern Vermont, participated in a similar effort in a different town, his town, to rehab an old church slash Grange Hall into town offices.
So they had various sources for funding. So one of the things, I guess there's several things on the list for this year. Of course, some open houses to get some interest from people, show them around the building. The, we're hoping to draw again for the Welcome Center, to take a day to be able to fundraise at the Welcome Center, which in the past has been really beneficial, put in some good money that way. I talked to Carrie about steps ahead, what we're looking at for next steps. He mentioned the getting the steeple painted. That hasn't been done, we want to get that painted up and protected. Looking at the foundation underneath the wooden section of the building, getting assessment going on, what's going on there. And thirdly, my kind of little pet project with data, look at those appliances in the kitchen, find out if they're functional. If they're functional, you know, learn about that, but have them available in case there were events that might want to happen at the hall that involve cooking. So not a huge agenda for this summer. The, you know, we'd be looking at grants, trying to find appropriate grants to help fund the painting of the steeple and the foundation work. So, you know, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Right now, active members reporting to you guys and myself and Carrie at this point.
Right, so have you guys, so you guys haven't met since town meeting or anything, obviously?
No, and I think that's one of the things I want to talk about here because one of the things that I really am not anxious to do is to have meetings for meetings' sake. And I wanted to know where we stood, if the meetings basically were generated around activities instead of, you know, having to do this every other week on a Wednesday night. I'm assuming as an advisory committee to you folks that between me keeping up with the Facebook posts about what's going on and getting that out in the Facebook posts, maybe Guy could post some of the posts from the Facebook if there's new news because I've been asked by a number of people, you know, how do I find out more about you? Oh, I don't have Facebook, I'm not on Facebook. I don't think it's necessarily something unless it's a real shout-out like for volunteers to, for making food and stuff for the Welcome Center, to go through Julie. But basically to keep you guys informed, let you know when the open houses are going to be. And then as we move towards grants, et cetera, like that, if we find a grant and we start working on that, then we would be more active and more involved with you. How do you feel about that?
Well, I guess the one thing I would say is just to, and apologies if you don't necessarily realize this, but other people have been appointed to the Meeting House Committee in addition to the two of you.
Okay.
Which is also Dan, following our discussion at town meeting, although I gather that feeling may have changed and you may not want to actually be a member of the committee. But we did appoint him as a member of the committee.
Okay.
Mark is on the, has been appointed to the committee and Stan Noga has also been, Noga, has been appointed to the committee as well.
Okay.
So I guess I would encourage you guys to consider at least having a meeting to sort of all discuss what the summer's plans might be to make sure everyone's involved in it beyond just yourself and Carrie, but...
Sure, okay. No, I have, I sent a note off to Stan because, I mean, as far as the appointments to the committee, I'll let Dan address that if he wishes to. But yeah, I, people that were interested in finding out what's going on at the Meeting House need to compute until I want to get on the committee.
Right, although we got a separate communication from Stan that he did specifically want to be. And I mean, you know, Dan and I had an exchange both at town meeting and then after-town meeting where I felt like you were still interested in being on the committee. I know that's changed and that's, that's fine, but based on that, you know, I took that as being a willingness at the time to be on the committee, so.
I don't have any aversion to being a part of the discussions, so being, as I expressed to you, I'm not exactly sure, you know, what I can bring to, to the committee. Certainly in terms of any expertise that might be helpful, I can't say that I have any necessarily, except, you know, I can have a moniker of common sense and can speak and write complete sentences. But beyond that, and as a, you know, brand-new member of the community, I'm a little bit hesitant to be charged with like figuring out what the community should do with this landmark structure.
Right.
But, you know, but again, it was just a matter of being a part of the discussion and certainly I'm, certainly I'm willing to help with, you know, any events or whether they be fundraising events or, you know, refurbishment-type projects that come up.
Right, and I mean, I guess I'd say, I mean, I defer a little bit to LeAnn, but I mean, I think from our perspective, that kind of is what the committee, I mean, and I think that, you know, for a while, it's been all of that just sort of trying to think about what might happen and whatever little things has all been falling on a very small number of people. So if we can expand that number slightly, even if it's, you know, for a limited scope of what's going on, that's, that would still be beneficial, I think.
Yeah, but you know, we're not getting into mortgage and debt, and that would be helpful.
Certainly. So have I convinced you to stay on the committee for the moment? That you didn't realize you were on?
I'll give it a shot, whatever.
So are you, so I'll go ahead and act as the acting chair at this point and call up the meeting together and get the people together and sit around and look at the calendar and get some ideas about when things will happen and then we'll let you know and see what the minutes or whatever.
Because LeAnn, I don't think it necessarily has to be every single month. It could be every three months or every four months. You know, you're not set to a specific every month, like the select board were every two weeks. Well, you don't have to be.
Well, I think the way that I interpreted it was as an advisory committee, we're not necessarily one of those groups that has to post that we're going to meet so that the public knows, so that the public can attend.
Yes.
That's a question that I have for you.
Yeah, I think any organization at this point, even an advisory committee, is generally subject to the open meeting law. So if there's going to be a meeting of the advisory committee, that should be warned and there should be minutes and there should be an agenda for it.
Okay.
Again, that doesn't mean that the committee has to meet on a regular schedule just right now. When you do meet, you need to publicize that it's being.
All right, so I can throw it out there, say, find a good time for everybody to be able to show up.
Right.
Make sure that we give you how many days' notice to be able to warn it. What do you need, a week, a week, two weeks?
I have, you know, there's three or four different types of meetings, but right in the office on the wall there is the exact language. So for me to speculate, I can just go out there and look at it, but there is a, I think, a 48-hour notice for the agenda and the meeting, I think, is seven days.
Okay, well, that's.
But I can just check that out.
So it's posting it, I mean, it would be getting it to Guy so he can post it to the website.
Okay. Okay. Good, and it's warming up enough so that we can meet at the Meeting House for the summer? Okay, so does all that sound all right to you? Some open houses, some, you know, fundraising things that we can draw together to do there? Awareness, Facebook?
I mean, that all sounds very sensible to me, I mean, to other people.
Yeah, I have some little ideas, but it's a very, it's, but... It's all commendable, this is great. We read the reforming, David, we'll be going. Background, we started the committee back in July of 2014. We were, fortunately, we had $30,000 workout, but we had nothing else and the building's come a long way in that period, a huge long way. That, saying that, I've talked to a number of people in the community and they really would like to use the sanctuary. Well, that's a problem and because of the heat. So you can use a sanctuary other than, for about four months in a year, but you've heard my little expose at the, at the town meeting about the heat, so I'm not going to get to that. But in order to do anything with the heater insulation, we have to satisfy a very big problem, that's the bad guano. So you might want to talk about that at your, at your meeting, maybe with Chris, Stan, and the other numbers, and see if you have any suggestions. So maybe I called one person that was going to get me a quote and that just didn't work out, I mean.
I had farm insulation in last year.
I'm sorry?
I had farm insulation, look at it.
Agguano?
Yeah.
Farm insulation, would do it?
Yeah, well, when they came to give us a bid on insulating the addition, I took them up there. And I had a look at it and they said, we aren't touching this with a 10-foot hole. This is surf pro all the way. It's, you know, basically, it's a toxic situation. It's going to require.
Masks.
It's going to require a hose, a dumpster, it's going to require tenting. It's going to require.
And this is for what?
For the paying, blowing out the guano from the upstairs.
Oh, the back.
Right. Right. So his estimate, he says he doesn't do it, but he said you're looking at between 10, around $10,000 and up just to remove that stuff.
I didn't realize there was that much.
Well.
Joseph and I were up there weeks back and we saw it. And, but the, do you want to finish what you said? I don't want to cut you off.
I just wanted to say that the problem is, is that it has to be sucked out. It can't be swept out, it can't be shoveled out.
That's right.
Because you, everything's keyed in, all that lath is keyed into the ceiling down below. So it, it, it's a very careful process that needs to happen for a lot of different reasons, so.
Surf pro does that?
That's what he, he mentioned. I haven't, I haven't necessarily gone down that road just because of the cost and we were, we were busy on other things, but it was good.
It's good to know, just.
Yeah.
I forget the name of the disease that you give her, the H, it's a lung disease. And it's just really, it has to be done professional. Amen, end of story. I mean, it's just that simple. And Joseph and I were up there looking at it back weeks back. But the first initial thing is we've got to stop the bass coming into upstairs, so we've got to resolve that as well. There's no sense in doing the latter when you haven't got the formula. So we have to entertain that idea before we ever can even consider about... Surely we could throw heat in the building for $7,200 per quote last year and get a grant probably with no insulation, but it would be hard to heat that sanctuary doing that way. It would work okay in the addition because it's smaller. But as far as the, and probably could insulate the addition, probably has no backbone issue. But as far as the sanctuary goes, that's kind of hard. But if I can continue with my thoughts, the idea of the opening of the sanctuary, as Speck was approached to me, it was approached to everybody at town meeting, about, and I've been approached many times by using it for town meeting. It's kind of a goal of mine to have that happen. I'd like to have it come out 2021, because I always said, sure, it doesn't stop. But, you know, we have to face this major issue first before we can think, even think about going the other route. Secondly, back when I was on the committee and just starting to think about going past the construction aspect, now, instead of being a two-pronged idea, it's now a three-pronged idea. Funding, construction, and event planning. And the problem before on the committee was one or two people were doing the bulwark of the committee. And I think I'm saying that it's a really good idea if we have people like specialize in this on the committee or get somebody that will help. I know one person that could do event planning and probably kill me for saying this, and that's Chris Webb. He's at Baton Rouge back in Connecticut. So he could be a person that could be considered to maybe start helping with that. The construction aspect, that's a whole nother different niche. And the funding aspect would be like grants and funding. So I think what I'm saying is if it's split up that way and everybody has their own niche, you could move forward and get maximum use out of the building. So that's pretty much it.
Anything else that you wanted to talk about?
No, that was, that was about it, but we'll keep you up to date and, yeah, that sounds good.
Well, we want to thank you very much for your efforts, Tor. And you've done a lot over the last year, too.
Oh, I, last year was a little bit slower than normal, but we were able to bring some money into the kitty, so, so, you know, that just every little bit.
Well, we appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Well, the Welcome Center thing is just a freaking goldmine. We got $2,000 last time?
No, we got closer to three and a half, didn't we?
Less than that.
Three thousand?
The first time, the first time was really good.
No, the second time was better.
That's when I.
Second time was much better, I think it almost doubled it. Yeah.
Amazing.
That's amazing.
Stan, we do have a lot of people that have been informed that they want to help on that, so.
Oh, Wes Barbour and things like that, so.
It's typically, we're going to try for the 21st, I think, of June, right around then. Sometime in June, we've always had, done it in June when schools gotten out and all the visitors are starting to come up and all of that.
Do you have to like ask them in advance and they fill in a slot or something like that, right?
That's wrong.
Perhaps a sanctuary lottery.
Is that how it works?
Pretty much.
Yeah, because I sure Joseph.
Yeah, and hopefully I still have my contact with you and I'd be able to get the product, so.
That'd be great.
That's a huge thing.
That's easy money, for sure.
Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, LeAnn.
Oh, this way?
Yeah, that way.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Thanks, Dan.
Dan, thank you very much. Bye. See ya. Did you get his name, Stan Towler?
Oh, it's right here.
Oh, good, good. I kind of forgot. Right there. Okay, so 6B Green Up Day, which is out of April 4th. The update on that is I've heard from a couple of people, Dan being one of them. I'll send out more communication next week, maybe. The bags are well tied. I saw the, an email, the bags in theory will come next week, maybe. I didn't bring any I thought I should have thought to. I still have a bunch of bags at home, too, so. If by any reason somebody comes in looking for bags before they come, tell me and I'll bring some or I'll bring some by and leave you with some in case.
Can't believe it's May coming up already.
Yeah, I know. And Mark, maybe, well, I guess we'll meet again right before it. And maybe at that point, you and I can talk about LWR and Buddy Mountain and come up for a strategy. I have, are you going to be, are you going to be available on the day, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Maybe we'll be. Okay. Because I have reached out to the high school, the high school principal and Scotty about trying to get more kids involved since we, last few years, have had virtually no kids involved. And Leland McGrath, he sounds like their community person that's going to talk it up more and try to get some kids to commit to doing it. So my hope is that maybe if we have a few more kids who can worry about the roads, then we can maybe focus on the bigger sites and stuff.
How bad is some of our roads?
It's pretty bad.
Pretty bad.
It's pretty bad.
I think it's what LWR goes, you don't, it's like part of the property.
Multiple pouches and mattresses and, you know, there's a lot of stuff.
Any word in regards to Archie with the truck?
That was, I have not spoke with Archie since, but I will, I've got it written.
Okay, yeah, we'll touch on it.
Do you guys give the kids community service, like do you guys sign off on any of them as an incentive?
Yeah, I've, I've signed off on it before when any kid has shown up, but it's. Yeah.
It's still not incentive.
Other than one of Harvard, Perry Warren's daughters a couple of years ago, I don't think I've ever, I don't think I've ever had any other kid come to use those community services, even though I think, think I am. Which is partly why I was hoping that the high school principal and their community service person would be able to promote it a little bit more, so. Anyway, so that's Green Up Day. Moving down to old business, first up is the LEMP review slash approval.
This is a signable copy, I have a copy copy of it. So I emailed everyone a copy of the plan and I took the liberty of filling in the initial front page here. David, if you wanted to add an additional phone number, you can, there is a space for it on that page. You don't have to.
Okay, yeah.
Shelby, did you take the course?
I, I just printed or whatever, I didn't print anything.
Okay.
But I will, or I'll come here and do it.
Well, so at the end of this evening, I'll just take the minute to go through each of the pages very quickly. The first part here on the cover page, David, would be where Shelby would sign because she would be the someone certified with the ICS 100 training. And then you would sign underneath as the select board chair.
Okay.
So that's the first page that you sent in. On the second page, I checked off and labeled the pages.
I'm going to just dot so you know I'm just, as we, I'm going to circulate the pages or make connections.
Okay.
So we're looking at the same thing.
On page two, the required elements, I filled out the page numbers where that information can be found. Basically a chart. On page three is the beginning of the plan and where we put in the directors and the potential EOC staff members. Each person should have at least, at minimum, a digital copy of this plan. I'm not sure if I emailed, did I email one of these to you before?
I haven't been able to check.
Okay, if not, I'll give you a hard copy of it. But otherwise, the select board members all have a copy of it. On this next page, we start.
I think we might, no, it's fine. I think we have multiple page twos.
Really?
If possible, just before we avoid.
It's one and two, page, one and two is the required elements, that's like the cover sheets.
Then the numbering starts.
Then we begin the actual plan itself. The first page says, it has a number, yeah. Second page of the actual plan begins with resources. At the very top, where I have to be determined purchasing agents for emergencies, I confirmed with David and Guy and I told the, with the regional that yes, the select board members have the authority to purchase necessary supplies and that's all, that's all we have, there's no other plan. The amount that we can have for spending limits, we said, I think we put $500 into the plan, but that was sort of for seminars. So if we could leave it to be determined?
Yeah, I mean, my reading of the exchange with, with the regional was that if we had designated amount, it would be good to do it, but we weren't.
I mean, the closest we have to designated amount was the $500 I asked for us to put back into the budget and put there. So if you wanted to put down $500, you could do it in a written form right there where it says emergency spending limits under number three, resources.
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily think that makes sense to put that down because that really implies that.
Yeah, it puts a cap on it.
We've set the cap of $500 if something happens.
I would, could use the word as needed.
I put to be determined.
Yeah, or we just don't have one, because, right, we just don't have one.
All right, so then if we go on to page three, that's the National Incident Management System. We don't have any. We don't have any equipment other than a grader. So, there's nothing additional that we have on here. That was page three. Page four, pretty straightforward. I put both the Brattleboro Reformer and the Commons and the radio station as our local newspapers. Page five is filled out with the basic information, primary shelters, alternate shelters, the Newburg schools, the alternate, the primaries, the Newburg Fire Station. And then page six is just a checklist or a list of names and phone numbers. Again, basically, what this report is this year is names and phone numbers. In the previous years, there were maps and things of that sort. But I guess they have all those from previous years, so that's what it is. The only thing I couldn't get my computer to print was on the top of the first page of the plan, where it says local emergency plan is municipality, I couldn't get it to write Brookline. It would not write. So, someone would take a marker and write Brookline, but we mail it in.
Okay.
Okay, and the date of date would be there.
And that's on.
It's on page one of the Local Emergency Management Plan, first one, where it says Dorothy Maggio and Shelby Brimmer.
The only thing is that Scott Tabash is last name.
I bumped it up. I spelled it wrong again.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
He was my diversity teacher in high school, so like, I don't know if I can spell it, but I'll see if I can find it.
I'll have it up on.
B A, B A, C H, L I C K.
Yes.
So, if you don't mind, would you make that correction for me?
What was it again?
T A, B A, C H, L I C K. Fashioning.
All right, sorry about that.
I have one question. I might be showing my ignorance of local events with this, but isn't the sheriff stepping down?
Sheriff's Department is the closest law enforcement department.
I was just curious when he's stepping down.
June.
It's June. Okay. So, yeah, I guess then, you know, he was on that for half of it. And actually, I just changed the.
Oh, we don't use the sheriff's department. We use the Vermont State Police. But the closest.
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm just saying that the actual, that Keith Clark is on here as the sheriff. But I guess there's no other option. He is currently, so, and I mean, I would assume that the number for that is the department's. Oh, yeah, it is the same, so, yeah. I guess next year, we'll just, maybe that's the only change we have.
That would be great. So, again, I would just, someone could write in the municipality, the date, today's date, and we change Scotty's name and sign this, make a copy, keep one at Town Hall and send the rest to the Brattleboro office. Is there any address on here?
Who guessed that? Lisa?
Yes, I wish you the lot of.
Oh, or submitting it with a hand correction?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. I have a, I can't get my computer back, yeah. I'm on access to a printer right now and.
No, I just would have liked, I would have sent somebody else right there.
Come.
On road over at 27, it's nice and bold.
The first one that we handed in was all handed in, remember?
Oh, yes.
So, that one correction. So, that was the plan. And as you know, this week, the emergency plan was established in Vermont and half the state is under warning again for this weekend with the rain and the snow melt and the flooding conditions. And those are things that we just keep an eye out for and anybody who's involved with us, if you see a problem, you're supposed to report it. Sometimes Guy will get a call to ask if there were any damages done from any storms and things of that sort, and so we report it that way.
Only because the state collectively pools all that report and they may be eligible for federal grants.
Let's, we, we'll make a motion and do that first, but we'll get. Okay, so I guess I'd make a motion that we approve and sign the updated local emergency management plan for Brookline. Do I have a second? Okay. So, as a discussion, do people have any questions? Were any concerns about anything we saw on it?
It's pretty straightforward this year.
No, yeah, I mean, it's great.
One question, is there an emergency plan for pets still included in the?
I did not do an emergency plan for the pets. I did not.
Okay.
We had done that task, but the plan is, that plan is not one that I was gonna undertake.
Okay.
Okay, so then, all those in favor of adopting and signing the updated local emergency management plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. So, I'm just kind of making sure it's back in order. Not that we're gonna mail it the secondhand, but.
Can I have a copy?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna.
So, we know it's original.
I'm glad somebody uses it, just as I don't. Okay.
But the past years are still going now. Get your names on it.
And then Shelby, do you want to sign?
Tell them. I'll get designated copy.
Okay, that's great. I work, you work on where we need it right now. Okay, moving on to 7B, while Dot is also still here, the Austin Cemetery.
Okay, I also emailed and attached the same email, the updated invoice for working on the Austin Cemetery, which included adding topsoil to fill in the casket depressions and making sure that the new seeding is mulched over. So, the estimate is approximately $5,530, of which $5,000 of it would be a donation from Kenny Massey, who was in Mexico, but is very interested in coming up and seeing the process as it continues on. I did want to bring to the select board's attention, and I'll leave it here to take a look at you, Pay used to own Indian Acres before, in 2006, did work on, at that time, improving the cemetery. And so, she has a, made a binder here with the pictures and such and letters that she has done and updates of historical information, who, what graves are there, cemetery variables starting from 1801 up to 2003, the cemetery has been active. Pictures of different tombstones and, you know, so I want you to look at it.
So, sorry to get me in the dark.
So, anyway, but the day after the last meeting, Mr. Blue did go into the cemetery and started to excavate the area and clear it out. I thought, Nathan wants to.
The access road, not the same.
The access road, that's correct. So, we have, have started on the process of, because that would have been.
Right, he's already removed a couple of trees.
He's already cleaned some of the trees and some of the work.
Need to be removed.
Right. And so, you know, we do need to, at the end, maybe some of the money that would have been spent here in the access road can be used eventually to purchase another non-locking gate. But we do need to have some kind of closure to the entrance so that the area, because it's secluded, does not become an area where people might go in and vandalize or other things. So, just having an unlocked gate to the access would be something to consider. That's not in the estimate, but I know why not work, is if they can put something together for us. And we'll modify as this is an estimate. But shouldn't be, wouldn't be any more than what we have on that form. That's the top of the line. And when we talk to Samara, again, we do have enough money left over in issues to cover that extra $500, $600.
Right, $530.
Right. So, yeah, when we walked up there, there's still some ice and snow. It's not ready to be worked right now, but we do think we should be able to get it done before the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30.
What about Thomas?
So, Tom has understood now that the deed does not, that the deed for his purchased property does not include the access.
And that was confirmed? It still sounded like it wasn't confirmed at that point.
Well, subsequent to the last meeting, like Dot and the next, the very next day, Tom Blue started doing work and Dot, and we came here, Tom also came here. We all looked at the deed. There's wording in the deed that is pretty clear that the deed, the deed for his property is accepts.
Accepted it.
Accepted and reserved the cemetery and the access to the cemetery. Guy then, I think, had a subsequent conversation with Tom, at which point Tom, I think, now realizes and accepts that he does not own the access road to the property that he purchased. He has, this evening, actually dropped off an access permit to put in a new access to his piece of property.
On the north side?
On the north side of the.
Yeah, the bridge, okay.
You know, the exact particulars of it, I think, are still unclear because there's not a map and stuff. But unless Guy feels differently from anything, I believe that Tom, that the dispute, not that it was really a.
I think there was a meeting of the minds and everybody's in agreement.
Now, we're all on the same page.
Great. Great.
That there isn't access to that, to his property currently through that.
Guy, I should forget on his access permit, there's a drainage pipe that comes from underneath the stone wall in front of the cemetery.
The one that Archie put up?
Yeah, it's a four-inch drain pipe that takes the moisture from the wall along where Tom wants the access and tucked on daylight down over the bank.
Okay.
So, we'll have to make sure he's aware of where that is.
Okay.
Goes right across his proposed access road.
Yeah, we're just in the initial stages of the permit and it, we'll have to go on a little further with it, you know?
And, yeah, like I say, I mean, I guess I would also add, I mean, that Dot alluded to as well, that really, from my perspective, the work that Tom was doing on that access road, so far, really just reduces the amount of work that we, that we would have to have someone do. Because he was taking down trees that were gonna need to be taken, needed to be taken down and clearing stuff that was gonna need to be cleared anyway. So, it's, it will actually be beneficial while that was done. So, before I make a motion, I guess we're, well, I'm gonna, I'm, I think I would like to make a motion that we approve, that we approve the spending of existing budgeted cemetery funds not to exceed $600 for the work at the Austin Cemetery.
Because we have rocks on it.
So, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll just.
Okay. So, for discussion, how do people feel about that?
So, would she pay, do we figure out how it's gonna be, how the financials will be handled yet? Like, was she gonna donate to the town and then we'll?
That's a good point.
Just because then that changes, like, whether it's a $5,000.
Right, yeah.
$500 purchase from by the town, or if we're just kicking in $500.
She'll do whatever to, whatever the property, the board is, she can pay. Why not work? She can pay when the bill is, after the project is done and if the bill is submitted to the town, if you want the bill submitted to the town, however you decide, you know, you can just tell me later on or, you know.
So, isn't it probably simplest because of the purchase policy to have her pay the expenses up to $5,000 or give to the vendors?
That's, that's how I, that, yeah, I mean, I feel like that would be simpler. I mean, I guess with the caveat that we should run this by Samara to make sure there's not some reason that she can think of, although she was here when we were discussing it last time and I don't think she seemed to have an opinion on what made more or less sense. All things being equal, I think we would just as soon stay as much out of the payment of the vendor as we need to.
All right, did you change your mind on that? I mean, no.
Does that, people agree with that? Rest. Any other discussion? So, just to restate my motion, which was.
To approve the expenditure of existing budget cemetery fund, budgeted cemetery funds, not to exceed $600 for the work at Austin Cemetery.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Dot, so much for all your attention to all these things, but, and to this and.
All right, I can leave it there in case somebody wants to get home and it's very.
I would like to look for it.
Yeah, if you can, take a look at it. We give you the ideas.
Yeah, if you don't mind leaving it for a little bit.
Yeah, no, actually, it's, it belongs in Town Hall and I.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, you knew that.
Anything else about the cemetery, or is that it?
That was it. All right, I guess I can go, huh?
You're free to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Dot. Good seeing you.
Nice do. Well, I'll stay for a bit.
Okay, so next up, the 7C, discuss and potentially approve the road paving RFP. So, I suppose the first thing to really get into discussing is the hill road, whether we reduce the level of that or not, discussion, because that, what we do, where we are, contingent on that. So, some of us visited the site on Saturday morning. Mark unfortunately wasn't able to make it, but I feel like the rest of us. For myself, I can say that I know I, I looked at the site pretty carefully and understand what the, although I'm saying that now and Mark is giving a.
I do want to apologize for missing the meeting. I got off in much more of a job without even thinking of, so, meeting is passed, so, my apologies. I drew a picture of what I feel is the work that would need to be done. I left the orange marks in the road, which you.
Yep, yep, we were able to locate those. Bruce came and looked, Gwen came and looked. I did, Guy did.
And I just drive over it every day and I made sure that I did a good feel for it. I go, one mark, oh, two, that's for it.
Cynthia and Todd Lawley were also there.
Oh, you guys ended up inviting them, first of all?
I, we don't know. I did not.
They may have watched the meeting.
Small town.
Maybe they, yeah.
They hacked into the camera.
Yeah, and Pat, Johnny wasn't there, but Pat, who works for Johnny, was there. I guess I'll just start by, well, I should like to wait for Bruce because Bruce had some thoughts too. I will say, from my perspective, looking at the site and talking to Cynthia and Todd about the concerns, I'm, I'm not convinced that this would do anything to help the concerns because I ultimately think the concerns are all people speeding and related to people speeding. And in fact, lowering the level of the road and making it a more level surface where people can see a little bit further will actually encourage people to speed more.
If they think they can see, if they think they can see the road ahead, they're gonna go faster.
Well, and it would, it would, on some level, make more of a bit of a stray away, which I think is partly what encourages people to speed there. So, that's my opinion. I don't actually think it would help the situation or the problem. Bruce?
I concur. Looked at it a lot. Dot and I chatted about it a little bit. Couple ideas we could consider. I think you're right on as far as what you're talking about in terms of speed. I originally liked the idea, but I thought about it a lot.
It's a lot of money.
$20,000 is just, it's just, it's unreasonable as far as.
At, at least.
Yeah, at least, well, yeah.
The O'Briens, this is what they do for a living. They, they dig down, put new gravel, install driveways. So I feel like he's got a pretty good grasp on the price and he, I asked him not to give me his best price. He basically went to a bar and said we decided to do it. And so he left the price a little high. And not knowing, he said what the price of pavement would be going for per ton would change it. But he, he told me that he was certain that it would go under that price if we were asked for bids, but that's
Right, exactly. And I mean, I think that to me, though, though I would potentially have other concerns about what the price of it is, just for me, it, I don't think it would help anything, so I don't think it makes sense from that standpoint.
It could even hurt it, Dave, not, not from what you're talking about. But by cutting it down, then we gotta deal with the two accesses.
Right.
And there's one, there's several points, if I can get in here a little second. I'll go into Todd Lawley first because he and I talked a bit. And he had a big problem, which really has nothing to do with the town, with, well, he had to dump a couple of truckloads of stone in above Cynthia's there because they couldn't get the buses out because of the water. Can everybody kind of see this? Here's Hill Road.
His picture's way better than yours.
No, it's not the same thing. This is Hill Road, this is, this is Cynthia's. And Todd's argument was that the water's coming down off of Cynthia's wherever she has the cemetery or where she goes into the back way, and the water comes right here and goes hunk. So Todd was saying, well, maybe the town should put in a culver or a culver here. And I got to thinking about it on the way home and I said, love to help, but that is a really town's responsibility, is it?
Well, good drainage is
Yeah, I mean, I think it's in our interest to have good drainage, although I don't know necessarily what other drainage problems we might potentially create in attempting to help with that.
He was interested in alleviating this problem here and doing something with the water so it doesn't go, doesn't go into there. That's his issue. That's what he was interested in. As far as the safety concerns, which were all legit and hiding up and down the road, looking at how it's gonna go to it, and this is what I found. As you come off grassy road going towards Howard's, yeah, going towards Howard's and going towards Cynthia's. Soon as you make the turn there, enough that we can change without a lot of grief and aggravation, you hit a 40 mile speed limit.
I noticed that. Ever since you guys started bringing it up, I was like, that's so, it encourages you to think you should just, and it's 40 coming back too.
Yep, it's dumb.
For that half mile.
Yeah, well, yeah, and then, once you go up to, once you go up to the crest of the hill, we don't know what we're talking about, cutting down. It stays 40 and then you got the warning sign that there's a reduced speed limit ahead and then about, oh, I wanna say 50, 75 yards before Howard's, you've got the 30 mile an hour speeds on. My wife thought, make it all 30 miles an hour. I am seriously not into that approach. I just don't think that would work at all. And I'm not so sure, my idea would work that great either. I think it's a great idea if we could to change that to a 30 miles sign at that point. I know we have to go through the state, do all kinds of crap. Yeah, okay, good question. And then, when we come to the crest of the hill, it's kind of redundant in a way. You change to 40 for the 500 yards or 400 yards, whatever it is, until you have to change your sign, if it's worth it to do that. That's that way. I think there's less of an issue that way, other than what we talked about, about the 30 miles, as opposed to 40 miles being so than the other way. The other way seems to be more of an issue because somebody's whipping, coming down there and doing 55, you know, the end of the story. They come whipping off that, the buses coming out, and they can't break, it's all wet, whatever happens, we've been lucky. Doc came up with, we were talking about it one day, Doc came up with that great idea, the Jack, I don't know if you all know Jack Winters Antiques over on, over in New Fane.
By the old firehouse? You know where the old firehouse used to be in New Fane on Route 30?
Do you like, you can explain it to us.
Well, coming into New Fane is 40 miles an hour. Right before it turns to 30 miles an hour, the old, the old firehouse was and Jack Winters Antique Sign was there, and then there's a 30 mile an hour sign. What New Fane did was they painted stripes on the road and it, and which, this was a big reminder the speed limit was changing and it made everybody slow down. Now, the stripes painted on the road wears off, but you could strike the top of that hill, it would make, you know, you can do a sign, but the slot, the painting in the road after it's paved with stripes would, would be a visual reminder. I also thought it was something you can do by the school and church. You can have the stripes, the stripes there because that would be a visual reminder, you're slowing down here.
And the stripe's still there?
No.
Okay, they taped on. I'm like, wow.
About five years, five, five years ago, they were there, five years ago, when I first, when I first moved up full time, the stripes were there. And I thought this was great, but they do wear off, you do have to paint them, and I don't know if it's something
The town would not have been the ones who painted it.
There's actually a guy at Calhoun who goes around and
The strapping?
Does lettering.
Does the lettering and, and, yeah, so I think why not work used to do that? I think that was when he started out, making templates, not about thinking about it, so.
Well, I guess before we get, before we get too much into
Yeah.
Into what other efforts, because I do think we should separately discuss what other methods we might employ
We got signs we could do.
Try to improve the speeding situation or risk situation in that area.
But there's always so much to do, Dave.
I personally think that people at speed are gonna, you could put a million signs up.
Exactly.
They're not gonna buy that sign. It's certain ones. You know, there's a lot of buyers and then there's ones who don't care.
Right, I mean, one, one thought, and again, I, I don't think we, we should get too heavily into this now because it's a bit off of the topic. But, you know, I mean, we do have, we did budget some money, though we're no longer paying the state police for the one hour week that they used to pretend that they might come here. We, you know, it, it may well be worth our time to consider trying to determine when the key times of day are that this is most of an issue for either the buses or other people and consider hiring a state police officer to sit there for a couple of hours one day and ticket as many people as come by to send a little bit of a message or something. I mean, I think there are things we could potentially do that wouldn't be a bad idea to try to do that, but
That's a good idea.
Discussion for another time.
Haven't done before. I can think of my, my neighbor, Tony Palman, the next sheriff was sitting in Murdoch Road now with people running lessons. It's kind of a temporary fix. I know you don't wanna get off the subject too much, but I'll just be really clear. We could consider a number of things. We could consider signage, we could consider strapping, a blinking light. There's a number of things we can discuss about in the future to maybe try to mitigate this problem, try to help the problem, whether it's gonna remove the problem.
Okay, can we continue?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
That's just my thought, Tom.
So I think there's, we're all in fairly solid agreement that we don't think it makes sense to do the lowering of the road at that point.
Right.
Yes.
And Mark, you understand that?
I understand, I
I mean, I appreciate you coming up with that idea and trying to figure it out.
Well, I know that this is now, we've been in a couple times and we put up signs that say, "Hid and drive." I just thought that would be a fix, where she could see pulling out the buses or the drivers. It was just something to put out there.
More serious signage, any contest.
And basically, it was to really consider it before we paved.
Yeah, right.
Before we do our
Absolutely. So getting back to the RFP, and I'm realizing this is probably something that I should have talked to you guys about prior to the meeting, but has anyone actually written up an RFP for this?
No, it was contingent upon what we were gonna do with that.
So I guess what I'd say at this point then, for the next meeting, and I'm happy to help with this, let's, between the three of us, put on our agenda that will
We can have a draft RFP.
And have that ready to be
And we'll have the measured segments out and there's different things.
I have one quick question about that. When is the next time that we get a matching grant for paving in Brookline?
We're number 24 out of 25. So we're really way, way down.
This is for a year, they just not have grant money.
I understand that. Yeah, but you, so, five years at least, right? I was just curious.
But Hill Road would not be eligible for a grant?
No, I, I understand that, but I think it was brought up to me by a couple of different people that and I think everyone would agree, it's certainly best to pave our non-grant roads the same years that we pave the grant road because then you can save a lot of money on trucking and everything, moving of equipment, but being the case that it's five years out, I would say that's actually, could wait a year if it was next year, but I don't think it can wait five years.
No, I think after the amount of time we're, we're gonna receive it, it would be pretty well crumbled up then.
I, I just wanted to bring that up.
Joseph, that's, that's the last road, I believe, other than the little short stretch covered up to Sunny Lane, that we have not completed.
Right, that's the only
We've done all the other major roads.
Our roads are in great shape, especially our, this year, coming home this year. The roads are pretty atrocious around Wyndham County. I think there's a lot of, a lot of towns.
Yeah, I mean, we had a one pothole that was very bad, but, you know, they, they dug it out, they heated it, they compacted it, and he said that would last as long as the road, so
Oh, yeah.
That's our worst pothole and if we put down a little bit of this crack seal stuff, that'll make, what we do have paved already extend the length a bit, and you know, we do get our matching grant fund. The only other section that's in question, it may come before we get any grant money, is up next to the river. That's a section that's railing and if, if you walk it, it's worse than you could imagine.
And if you walk it from below, that's
Yeah, you get down and you look up, you make your hair very
But that may also fall under an emergency grant.
Yeah, more than just the paving.
That's a segment of road that's entirely old by itself, and we've addressed this before. In the event that something does go wrong there, we could find emergency money pretty easily. That would not be too much of an issue. But Mark is correct, and I'll, I'll address it when I have my segment of the road commissioner thing. But the only last part of the town we have is that portion of Hill Road, and it's pretty deteriorated, especially in front of the Howard Oscar Farm because it's just all crumbling now and falling apart, and it's not gonna last much longer.
And it was never good back in the first place.
Yeah, that's some scuttle about that too.
I don't believe it's up to the state standards from the past.
Yeah. That's pure speculation, I don't know.
That's what I was hoping, however, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have that to vote on at the next meeting. Okay, 7D, consider RFP to repaint the windows of the SLP building. So we all saw, and I don't know how much, I was kind of hoping that you'd print it out, at least a copy of them, because I didn't print anything out of them. The financials, the fairly detailed financials that Samara and Danny sent around. I guess before, and I'm not at all expecting that you would have Shelby, but did you start to make any progress on the budget type things?
The hard part is that the information I got from you only went through October last year?
That's what she gave me.
Yeah, so that's really old. And then the expense sheet, well, I mean, like, that's like, that's only
Yeah, you missed it three months. Two months, three months.
Well, because it's a fiscal year, so July to October
Alright, so you're talking about July, July.
Yeah, so that's a lot of, I mean, there's a couple of months that aren't done yet, like, that doesn't exist yet.
But I know we've had very little, if anything, for the, for the first four months of this year.
Which I could tell because the, the expenses that she, just the expenses, but not the breakdown that she gave us for that, when she pulled the numbers for four or five, for April 5th, there's not a huge difference in some of the line items from where you were at in October. So there's still like a lot of expenses through October and then there hasn't been, there's been some increases, but not well, there's been, there's definitely been increases, but nothing like crazy.
We had, we had some plumbing issues in December. But that's it, that's the last time I've heard of any problems with that building, so we're not gonna wood, oak, four months without having any problems with that building.
Yeah, so I emailed her, I will, the treasurer, the treasurer emailed, and I honestly did not get, I forgot that I kept, I kept forgetting I didn't email her just because, like, but I did email her asking for the, the itemized, the detailed one that you have. Because I had started filling in, like breaking it down, like the monthly cost for the line items that she had listed in the reports, but that only brings me through October. So there were a couple of things that it seemed like they're already sort of monthly expenses, but that'll be, I didn't really, I didn't wanna get too deep into like having somebody come sit with me and look at it, and we're only looking at three, like, we're looking at July, August, it's around four months. So it's not, yeah, so it like, some stuff looks like it's a repeating cost, a monthly cost, but if we're only looking at four months, so I can't really tell until I look at more. Like some of this stuff, like Thomas Bloom, there's an $80 every single month.
That's over.
It's not supposed to be in the account.
That was changed.
That is the field, it should be a town property maintenance that does not belong to Sunny Lane Daycare. They, they're responsible for their own mowing. The town does not pay for that. That should be, that's all that.
That's good to know. Well, that's why, that's why it's good, when you break it all out like this.
Yeah, hopefully, at any point currently, she's not putting that there because we, we discussed that a few months ago.
Well, that was what was tricky because I thought that she was gonna, she was gonna send this
The $80.
Tell her it's trimmed down. Samara said she was gonna change it.
Right, I know, I'm just saying that
So when I get the breakdown, I feel
Until we actually see the breakdown, we don't really know for sure that it has been changed, but it should have been changed.
Yeah, she said she was gonna do it.
Which is, she probably did, but that would be good because then it'll filter itself out, it'll be like, oh, this is not a recurring expense. There was like a towns and water recurring expense.
That's now every quarterly, Doc? I think it's every quarterly now, other than monthly.
$85 is only gonna be quarterly?
That's correct because of, because we went past a certain period of time that the cold, we had no cold form. In fact, we've had two years of it and with the water system being in to boot, we've had no issues with the water, so that means we only have to be tested every quarter.
There might be an annual thing where they might have to do a couple of tests, but especially now, now that they're transferring over from Sunny Lane Daycare to Suzie's Little Peanuts, there might be some duplicity that has been testing, unfortunately, but there might be.
Right.
So, yeah, so basically where we were at on four or five, on April 5th, is the expenses outweigh the revenue by almost $5,000.
Yeah, right.
And then if we don't, if we, if from that April 5th date, we didn't spend another dime till the end of June 30th, we would be, in theory, negative $2,200. That doesn't mean there wasn't a balance forward from the last fiscal year, there's something that's not in the balance sheets, there's some like money in the account from, I don't know where it would come from, but that doesn't mean there's not something else in play. But what it looks like is by June 30th, we'd be behind by $2,200 and then literally just pull the numbers. That's why, that's why I said, I don't know that there's not a balance forward previous year.
I'm trying to remember what Samara said last night, and she said word is black now.
Well, she said the money in the account is in the block, but
Right, and that doesn't, right, I mean, I think to, to echo, I mean, for the fiscal year, we've lost $5,000 on that building.
So far. But we should recruit some of it as long as we don't spend more money.
So far. We can recruit, right. Right, but, but to say, though we may have a positive balance in the account, that was because we started a greater positive place last year and we've eaten away
At that.
At that.
Yeah, potentially that balance forward is why there's a positive in the account instead of
Presumably, yeah.
So, bottom line is, we're not in the hole. Catcher wise.
But we are hemorrhaging money potentially.
No, we're not.
Well
No, we're not.
Right.
We're not hemorrhaging money, we're not.
Well, no, because those, so the
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, wouldn't
Not hemorrhaging, not, not a good choice of hits.
Joey, Joe, Joseph, last year we were hemorrhaging.
Yeah, I understand that.
So like
I understood correctly, didn't you? I mean, we've lost
Well, I'm gonna, to his point is what he was saying that I thought, so this is to show you kind of like where, because Bruce likes, you know, he's always telling us how like, well, no, it's stopped, it's stopped, I don't care because there's these big, there's these big bills that it stopped, we're not bleeding money, everyone's spend stable. So this number here, so 82, or $8,200 is essentially what was spent on repairs and maintenance, which was the most expensive line item between July 1st and October 31st. Our year to date on expenses to that as of April 5th was $11,500. So from, from October 31st to April 5th, there was only an additional $3,000 spent. So, so there was this huge spending right here, so I do, I mean, so I don't think that, I see what you're saying, where I don't think that the operating budget I see what you're saying, where I don't think that the operating budget, once I get, once we have this more complete picture, I don't think we're looking at eleven thousand dollars a year for repairs and maintenance. And especially because it's clearly like most of that happened within that period of time, where you guys were like, there's plumbing, there was this, there's a lot of that Scott person.
Scott over there.
Yeah, him, there's a lot of him, there's a little Bruce in there, that was like, you know, there's some stuff.
Why?
Yeah, so, so I see what you're saying with that, I see what you've been saying, when you're like, oh, like, no, like, but that's not what's happening now, it's been stable, like, we're not spending a lot of money. And it's pretty evident, just on the limited numbers I've seen, that we're not really spending a lot of money, and we haven't been since November 1st. But I would love to have the rest of the transactions, because this gets me to October.
Okay.
Only so I can break out what's truly the monthly expenses are not, because what the information I was looking at led me to believe that the Thomas Bloom was still a monthly expense for eighty dollars. So what I was doing is pulling those expenses out and creating a 2020 fiscal year rough budget for what we expect as expenses and anticipated revenue, which is the nineteen thousand two hundred dollars for a year revenue for the fiscal year 2020. So, so all I would say is, it doesn't seem like, even though there seems to be a balance forward that's made it so that the account is in the surplus, the budget doesn't, fiscal year 2019, if there had been a budget, we would have spent more than we would have budgeted for.
We talked about doing a line item and disallow it, because, two reasons. One, because it doesn't come out of the tax base at all.
No, 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 not a line item budget that you have to get approved, a budget, so as an asset that we're managing for the town, we kind of have an idea year to year, like what we're doing, like, we know we're gonna get this much money, we do. That's why it's so easy to make a budget for this building, we know that it's gonna bring in this much money. And then, once we really kind of get the transactions worked through, and you can like identify, nope, that was a one-time, or that's gonna be quarterly, or we can estimate, and not like crazy, every month, this is the month we're gonna spend that, but we can estimate what we expect to spend in a yearly amount. And what that does is lets us know, lets us know how much we have for these, for these, for these other projects that come up, for this like.
I know you don't wanna go with budget, I got that.
But that's not, so it's not a budget to get approved, it's just a budget so we're really informed about what's happening.
Right, and you're, um.
It's a good tool for projects, because then you can, yeah.
I've had a budget in my house, I've had for all my life. Couple of things, firstly, you've already hit on one thing, the expensive has hit a nose dive. In the past, we spent close to fifty thousand dollars on the building. We were dealing with a hemorrhaging situation, we had been dealing with a hemorrhaging situation since we bought it back in 2014. So this has been going on for five years, but we turned it over, without a doubt, turned it over. I'm not saying we're gonna have to have a problem again, that, that, that cannibalistic state says something stupid like that. But we have mitigated all the major problems, we've changed them, we fixed the meeting. The boiler could go, and, and we'd have to finance a boiler, we came up with twenty-five thousand dollars. Anything can happen, but the facts still remain that we still have a deteriorating building that we need to fix. And going forward, we can talk about fiscal years as you wanna do, but right at this point in time, we're in the black with our money, and hopefully we continue on going in the black with the money. But like you alluded to, as of July 1, we'll be getting promised, a bank wouldn't do this, nineteen thousand two hundred dollars here from Suzie, who we're. And that's fixed, she's responsible for that money. Doing the eight thousand dollars for the windows, if we chose to fix the windows, it's not gonna hurt our budget. It's not, you might think we're extending ourselves out a little bit, but we're not really, because if we do the RFP, and we do it with the idea of having to do it by the end of the year, like November, like we spoke last time. If we don't have the money, we can stop the contractor. I have one contractor, and I'm not saying he's the one we're gonna choose, that's willing to work with us, he's one of the finest, he's not the finest painter in the valley, if we chose to do that group, and he's willing to come to the, if the RFP is approved, to come to the select board meeting and talk to them with us. He's done this building, he's done New Fame, uh, New Fame Town Office, he's done Towns and Church, he's done Peter Myers, but they do wonderful work, and that's what I want, I don't want to fix for thirty years and never have to touch it again. But anyway, I don't wanna get off on the issue, which is the money. And I don't think that if we do the RFP, and put it in, RFP paving, RFP windows in a block, in the paper that we have to do, refer the website, have the specs for the paving in the website, have the specs for the paving in that, in that website, and we have to, you know, proceed with the RFP. If we choose somebody, let's say we choose the guy that I've been talking about, like I said, he's willing to work with us, he'll do it by the end of November, but if we don't have the cash, we don't have to do it. Also, we're not putting him, well, he understands all this, I told him six times. Also, if that, if, if that's not meaningful to the select board, we can do it in a portion. Maybe I can convince this person to do the windows in the, in the old building first, and then do the, which are seven, and do like the other three towards the end of the year, if we have the cash. What I'm stating is, we don't necessarily have to commit ourselves to spending eight thousand dollars, if that's the number, in order to do the RFP. We're not wasting anybody's time, and if we know we're gonna have to do it, the, the, the building has been neglected seriously over a very, for thirty years, and.
So, one, yeah, I mean, in, in your opinion, what happens to those windows if we wait a year to do this?
It holds us back, can I fit?
How does it hold us back?
Well, how are we gonna paint the building? We're gonna paint the building and then fix the windows?
When are we painting the building?
Pardon me?
When would the paint, when, when you guys plan on painting the building, was that a conversation before?
It's been discussed.
Yeah.
It's really, we have looked at it in two sections. The old building can be done separately, that's pretty easy. The new, the, what I call the addition, is much more complex, because you need scaffolds. There is one bit, like I told the last one, I think, there's one bit of rot that Dave's less gone, I didn't see in the southwest, excuse me, southeast part of the building facing the dumpster, which is like twenty to twenty-five feet up in the air. Little bit of a problem, need scaffolding or lift to do that, to do the mold remediation before you paint.
So can I ask a question, though? If we were gonna do the windows by November, how are we gonna paint the building? How are we gonna, I mean, how, how are we gonna do both this year, anyway?
That, that entirely depends on the fiscal situation. If we do it before November, and let's say, you know, in a beautiful world, we get them done by September, we still have a little bit of time that we could, that we could do the painting.
But if we weren't going to get them done until November, because of the fiscal situation, we weren't going to be painting until next year, anyway. I, I mean, you know where I'm going with this.
Yes, I do.
I, I'm of the opinion that we are not financially stable enough yet with that building, though we will be, I'm sure, soon, because of all of the work that's been put into it, that I'm more comfortable waiting to do the windows and probably the painting until next year, when we've banked a little more money and gone through a little more time without plumbing problems that we are confident are now resolved and things like that.
And before, oh.
You know, that's my.
Before you get too worked up thinking you're sitting next to four hard no's, these numbers.
Just one.
Don't, no, I'm, I'm a hard maybe.
I'm kidding.
Um, well, I could, fine, I'm a hard no now, you want to go there. No, I, I would really like to, I'm really hoping Samara can get the next Friday that they're all in, get me this, the next, because that's when they come in usually, right, Fridays, or?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
We took that as Samara.
Yep, well, I emailed the treasurer once, I was assuming.
Samara and Danny are kind of both reading that and responding to that at the moment, right?
So, so I would really like to get the rest of the numbers, because with the limited amount that I have, it's not worth going through the transactions with the young guy and saying, what was this? Was this recurring, is this not, or, okay, well, you said it's not recurring, but I'm seeing a very similar amount posting every three months, so is it, you know, not monthly, or, you know, so I'm willing to do that, and, because I would like to see, because like you said, eight thousand dollars in four months versus eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand five hundred dollars to date, you know, that's, that shows you that there has been a slowdown, but I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not saying that there's not money to do something this summer, I just wanna see the full picture first.
That's okay.
So.
What I, what I'm saying is, do the RFP, it's not gonna hurt us, it's not gonna make, it's not gonna hurt the contractor. We lined somebody up, they understand the stipulations, at least we have somebody that knows that we wanna do the work, and if we don't do it, we don't have the money, we don't do it, it's really just that simple. But lining them up and getting them ready and getting a quote, and getting a bid, we did the same thing with Pete Putin, with the, with the, with the church, and he could meet up, meet up his responsibility, and he ended up doing it in the following year, but stuck to the Pope, it's not gonna get any cheaper next year.
Right, I just, yeah, I mean, I'll, I mean, we'll, we'll ultimately probably just come to a vote on this, but, I mean, I'm.
Dollars and cents.
Sorry.
We should be, that's okay, I'm sorry, did you have enough?
No, no, I was just gonna say, I, I, I don't, I don't agree that it makes sense to do the RFP when, in my mind, we cannot afford to do this this year. So I think it's a waste of even the little bit of money that we're gonna pay to publish the RFP, because I'm, based on the evidence I have at the moment, I don't think we can afford to do this this year, so.
Okay.
But sorry, what's your?
Well, we're not spending any, any extra money on the RFP if we put it in the same block with the paving thing.
Well, it would increase, it would technically increase the blocks.
Be longer, be more injured.
Even if it's only two bucks.
Well, I think they have to be two separate, two separate RFPs, one is paving, no?
They do.
I didn't know, I just.
Now, as far as being able to afford it, that comes to a different, that comes to the issue that you guys are really pushing. Now that we're in the plus in terms of the amount of money that we have cash on hand, it's starting to grow, we're back to the issue of the, of the, of the forty-three hundred dollars in the fund, and, and I talked to Samara, that's a great length, but she's, yeah, capital improvement fund, and what she said is the select board has to decide what that is gonna be used for, because if you look at it for a second, I think I said this last meeting, what the capital improvement fund would be dedicated for, dedicate is a wrong word, used for. What is it gonna be used for? Is it just gonna sit there? Is it gonna be used for an emergency situation? Is it gonna be used for repairs? And what Samara said was, you have, it's, it would be a great idea if this select board would define what they think that capital improvement fund should be for. Saying that, last time I said that the only building that doesn't, actually, we have a revenue fund for the school. We have twenty thousand dollars in the, in the budget for the, for the, for the church. We have money in and out of schoolhouse, which is never used, except when we had that problem with the, with the powder coasted feeders last fall, and mitigated that. We've got a little bit of money in the plan if we need something for this building, and the salt and sand shit's got nothing to do with any of it, because we're going for a grant to rebuild it. So what I'm driving at is, we've got this forty-three hundred dollars that's sitting on the side, and we haven't determined what, what to do with it, and, and if you think about it for a second, between, like I said, during July and July, we're getting an additional nineteen thousand dollars, two hundred.
You can't.
Why not? Why not, why? Look, all right, look at it this way. Let's say we're a thousand dollars in the plus right now, after this month, and we're two thousand dollars in the plus for, for June. So now we're in two thousand dollars, okay? You say we don't have the money, you had forty-three hundred dollars, that, we're now up to sixty-three hundred dollars.
So it brews.
And that could be a backup, that could be a backup, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to spend, when we finish, and it doesn't mean we have to spend it right now, I'm just saying, we lined somebody up, so they're ready when we're ready, and then we can do it, so we're not eliminating the year. What your proposals are, is eliminating the year, and I don't think it's a good idea, and I'll tell you why. Because it hurts the whole scheme of things, I'm not just talking about the fixing of the building, that needs to be done. We just had Leanne here talking about the meeting house. That building is gonna take any order, you think thirty to forty thousand dollars is a lot of money? That's Chinatown compared to what that building needs. You start with a background, and according to Gary LaForte, it's more than thirteen thousand dollars. You add a heating system in, so.
Why, I'm, I'm, we're talking about the.
What we're getting, what I'm getting at.
Talking about the school.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't say my complete thought of.
Sorry.
What I'm getting at, is once we're done with this building, the school, then we have this money that's coming in from the school to go to the church, so we end up, let's say we're done, let's say we get the windows.
What?
Yes.
You totally lost me there.
Okay, we have a revenue from the school, let's say the school's done, we finished it up, and you have a budget, five hundred dollars a month, whatever you choose.
Whatever's the thing.
The rest of that money, let's say it's five hundred a month, six thousand, you still have about thirteen thousand dollars left. That money can be earmarked to go into, into the church, we have to use the money, we're not gonna just sit on the money. So what I'm getting, going forward, we have what was nineteen thousand two hundred dollars every year that we're gonna be getting from the school, and as it's completed, it's gonna, more of that's gonna be available to use for the meeting house, which needs it. Two painters, both agreed, roughly thirty, they're talking about painting the steeple, excuse me, I have to.
These all seem like separate issues, and I.
No, it isn't a separate issue, no, no, it's not a separate issue, because it has to do with money, and the, and the money that we get from the school would go into that building.
Well, hypothetically, that's something that, and I agree with you there, I agree, I agree, I agree. But it needs to be discussed first, and the capital improvement fund, I agree completely, we need to discuss what we're gonna do with that money, but again, it's a separate issue than what is on the agenda, than what we're discussing right now.
Can I say something really quick?
Sure.
We can't vote on the RFP that you would like to loop this one in with today, because we don't have an RFP for the roads. So this is not even a voteable issue today, and I would, and that would give me two more weeks to fill in this budget, and, you know, and then we, you know what I mean? Because that, we're all coming down to, we just don't see the money set in. But that's also because, like, I'm saying, I don't know, maybe there is an argument that we need money for, but I can't see the whole picture, but we don't, we don't have to vote on any of this, because if you want, if your, if your issue is you want it to be submitted with another RFP, that RFP's not gonna vote on today, so.
You're right, Gwen, yeah, Gwen.
One of my concerns, because of the past history, is using money we don't have, because we still have toilet issues, we still have plumbing issues, we could still have water issues.
Not as bad as you make it, yeah.
Well, but Gwen, that's.
Really, it's very mild.
Right, I mean, I, we, in fairness, we have yet to, I mean, I understand that we've gone several months without having major problems, but we haven't gone a year without having problems.
But I'm not saying spend the money, I'm saying spend the money when we get the money, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying call Joe Paul, plate painter, and say, start June 1, we'll get the money.
I understand what you're saying, but again, our, my concern is, it's kind of like David says, we're, we're cat, we're getting carted for the horse.
No, we're not, because there's nothing wrong with, spec differently, there's nothing wrong with putting out the RFP and lighting up a contractor, so he isn't ready for us, we keep him in communication with us, and we get to July 30.
Okay, so we've discussed this back and forth, I think, but.
You wanna vote on it, go ahead, vote on it.
No, not, we're not voting today.
Well, okay, I'll get a table.
So we're gonna table it until.
Well, I would pers, I would personally say that, I think that we're at a relatively level consensus amongst many of us. I think maybe we should vote on it, because it's taken up a good portion of our time over the last three meetings. And even, I mean, we have another big thing coming up, and we're relatively, we're set up to be behind steadily.
Can I just?
I think maybe we should vote.
God, yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm not totally sure, but I believe there's a statute that states that a town cannot spend money that it doesn't have, and I'm gonna, I would like you to do some research on that, because it's part of this program. I, I seem to remember reading something where a town is in a similar situation, and they wanted to spend money that they anticipated, and it was my understanding that that was not allowed, there was a statute against that, so I think.
To commit ourselves to spend money that we didn't yet have.
Exactly, you have to have.
Inside of the green situation.
Or have a way of collecting it and have it in a, in a fund. So I, I don't mean to throw, you know, any salt on your fire, but the bottom line is, I think that statute may exist, so you might want to research it.
It doesn't matter, because I'm not asking you to spend the money until you have it, I said that.
Well, except we. Well, except we, we can't accept an RFP without making a test.
A non-legally.
To pay that money. Because that's the thing, so I, what I, what I, I mean, I think, you know, if we publish an RFP, Bruce, we're gonna give people a deadline and say we're gonna open bids at a certain point. Then our obligation at that point is to either accept one of those bids or accept none of them. So if we accept one of those bids, we are.
Legally told.
Essentially committing ourselves to do that work.
Okay. Then maybe we should table this, uh, well, first, maybe we should table this till like June and do the RFP then after we've seen six months and you're clear, you're clear with where you're at with the numbers and see where we sit. Because we still have the discussion of the forty-three hundred dollars. We need to determine how the select board wants to use that. We haven't discussed it, not on the table, not on the agenda.
Yeah.
We can, and I won't be here next time, so it would be meaningful for me to make it up on the, was that?
No, I, no, I'm saying we can put it on the.
On the fifteenth, we can discuss what to do with the forty-three, talk about the forty-three hundred dollars then. So we're talking mid-May. I don't think we would be hurting by letting it lay for six, three weeks. Only because I'm selfish here. I've got somebody to do the work. And I think he's gonna do a great job. And I think he's gonna do it at the right price. In fact, I've talked about the price, so. Listen, you were gonna select him at God damn. But if we table the discussion till, let's say, the fifteenth, go ahead with the RFP with the paving. I don't wanna see that, I don't think that's a good, that's definitely not a good idea to hold a RFP for the paving. Not a good idea. So the idea of interjecting the two together to save a few dollars is, is not a good idea. So I would suggest that, I don't know where June is in terms of select board names, maybe mid-June, we re-entertain the RFP for this. And in the meantime, we see how the numbers look. And in the meantime, we figure out what we can do with the forty-three hundred dollars and see what other wish it looks like then.
Sounds like.
So, so we're gonna table this for a future meeting in.
June.
June and we'll figure out the particulars of what meeting that is as we get closer.
Does anybody have a problem with this?
Sounds good.
Is that fair, fair compromise?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So moving to seven E, the Consider Building Commissioner position.
Okay, my idea.
Does everyone still have their copies of the draft? Building position, building commissioner, I do. So I will say that one of the things that interested me after our last discussion of this was to compare it to what I believed might be a road commissioner description. But really, we don't have a, we don't have a job description for a road commissioner the same way as this is structured. There are some general roles and responsibilities laid out in VLCT publications for road commissioner, but there is not anything that I could find on VLCT anywhere for any, anything similar to building commissioners. So from my perspective, this is a completely new and original kind of, um, thing.
And I'm not saying that it should be made, you know.
I'm, I'm.
This is about future.
Yeah.
This is about the future.
Right. I mean, I'll say for myself, I'm, I don't think it's a bad idea to have this. I think there are kind of a number of changes that I think should be made to the proposed description of it. Um, but before we go into talking the specifics of the description, how do people, I guess, let's just go around, how do people feel about the idea of designating a building commissioner?
I, I think that it's, uh, it's certainly something that, uh, we should look into. I guess I would have the, the question, how do the other towns that have many more buildings than us? How do they deal with it? And then I would also say that, um, regardless of how they deal with it or what VLCT, what guidelines they have for us, I think that, um, we should not rush into to forming another paid, uh, position in the town. I think that I've, uh, gathered that from the people that I've spoken to in the, in the town. And, uh, I guess that's, that's a, a big thing looming over my head is, is putting another paid, uh, position out there. I don't think the town's voting really.
Do we pay guy for the road commissioner?
There is now a stipend for road commissioner that we added two years ago, five hundred dollars.
You can do what you want, but let me back, it may be clear. I think it's a good idea to have this. I wasn't really all that excited about, about having it be a paid position. Doc beat me up over it. So going forward, my, my thrust, my major consideration is that we have this for the future, that we have somebody to watch for buildings. Now, if you all, we all, decide to make a paid position, you wanna make that the issue for approving or disapproving, a little problem with that. But going forward, if I happen to be the one, I'm not taking the pay. But I'll make that clear right up front. I'm not saying.
Right.
That, that it shouldn't be in there, but I'm just telling you, I will not accept five hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars.
I guess I would say that I think it's very important that we consider the creation of the position and the description of what the position would be responsible for, completely separate from whether there would be any compensation for it and certainly way separate to who the individual might be.
So you wanna do a free statement?
Our response, yeah, I mean, I think our responsibility is to create a position that we think makes sense and has the scope that we make sense and not worry about who might do it.
I'm interested in your ideas for what you thought was.
But how do other people feel? It's Shelby and Gwen who have had chances to talk about.
No, that makes sense to me because, um, I, I personally would wanna see a job description before I thought it was a position. I mean, if it's a position with some real responsibility and accountability, like, I, I mean, I mean, that would be like, oh, I would advocate that that has some sort of compensation. If it's something that's more of that like advisory, like sort of, you know, like then, no. So, yeah, it all depends on job description for me, whether or not it would be paid. And then that would be a whole other issue of how to appoint somebody.
I'll just read them over.
Gwen, how do you, hang on a second, Bruce, Gwen, what's your feeling about the creation of the position? And maybe the description.
Well, I, I agree with Shelby that it needs to have specifics. Um, I don't even know if we have job descriptions. I think I made up one for the, like, the assistant town clerk, but it was only my duties. It wasn't anything that anybody even created. I just had, this is what I do and this is what he expects me to do. I think the VLCT has one for the town clerk.
Right, and they have one, you know, basically, it's also for the assistant town clerk. But basically, the reason they don't have one for an assistant town clerk is that the responsibilities of the assistant town clerk are the same as the town clerk and the town clerk dictates what he needs and what he expects or what she needs and expects.
Well, is this not clear enough or defined enough? And I'm, I'll, I'll push to you now here and let you interject your thoughts and what you think.
Well, did you see the one that she had made up that got made up for?
For, for Mark, yes. But that's a little bit different in a way.
The same idea though, it's the same principle.
It is the same idea, cause I took it off them a little bit. But that's a little more physical, but go ahead, Dave, you had some ideas?
No, I mean, I was just gonna say that, I mean, and, and I agree and I, I don't think by any means is this, the, the draft description is a finished article at all, but, but a few points that come up in it, I, you know, the, there's a line about, other than incidental purchases per the town purchase policy that I don't think should be, I mean, I, I think the overriding thing is, this is person is a, would I, to me, would be a position that would focus on paying attention essentially to the buildings while reporting all of that to the select board. And would not take any of the ultimate financial or oversight responsibility on, from the select board. Like your, the idea that, that the paragraph where you suggest that to be responsible for communicating the select board desires with advisory committees, I don't agree with any of that.
Why?
Because I think the, the communication for advisory committees, like the one, you know, the Historical Society and the Meeting House Committee, that should be directly with the members of the select board. That shouldn't be with this position if this position existed.
Okay, so then how would you, so you would cut that out?
I, that's, I'm not gonna get into, because I think, I think redrafting this is a larger, is a larger process than we're gonna get into right now. I'm not, I mean, I mean, I guess what we might wanna consider doing, um, and I don't know if somebody is open to participating in this, but this might be a good opportunity for a couple of the select board members outside of the context of a meeting to work on redrafting something that's maybe a little bit more fleshed out than this and.
A little bit less control.
Not controlled, not.
Look, there comes a time.
I mean, the, the reality is, we are, we as a board are responsible for these buildings.
That's correct, and I said it, that's correct, that's correct. But when you have a situation where work has to be done, we did this before with the meeting house where we gave Peter the, if he was, he was doing some work. And we gave Peter the go-ahead to spend up to five hundred dollars on certain items. That's kind of.
But that doesn't go under a, a description of what the person does as a, as a building, not inspector, but commissioner. That, that's not the perusal of a job description. And the job description is to say what that job involves. It means you walk around the building, you see that there's a window that's broken or, that's a job description.
Well, I think these, I think this can go one of two ways. It can either be a description that is extremely general and basically says someone who will actively pay attention to the well-being of the buildings of the town. And that might be the extent of the description.
Okay.
Or it could become very detailed. I don't, I personally prefer the former because I don't, I don't think this is a kind of role that's gonna necessarily, necessarily lend itself to a ton of detail and predicting what that might entail. Because it's, as these buildings change, and we do have, in most of the buildings cases, other committees who are involved and somewhat tasked with paying attention to those buildings. So I guess my big thing is I don't want this to be a.
We hope.
We hope, yeah, right. I mean, like with anything.
Okay, we hope. Because the past history hasn't shown that. But go ahead, if you've got anything else you want.
Well, yeah.
We can read, I just wanna see the building watched over is what I'm, was what I'm looking at. I'll give you a very quick example.
Yeah.
Like I went to see Susie the other day. There a minute, just to check on, make sure, I noticed a week before the water system, there's two scabs in the water system and one was turning a certain color and I'm going, oh, 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 they need to be cleaned. And I just wanted to go in there a week later to see if it was still lit. So as a building commissioner, I think it would be my responsibility to make sure that there's no issues there. And there was unfortunately. I was in and out of there in a minute. So if you wanted to make it a loose building commissioner, um, was the former. There's nothing wrong with that. Because when you get into any kind of a major, any kind of expense, anyway, it's gonna be discussed with select board, select board, so come on. So.
Well, and I, right, and I think we've shown that, you know, as, you know, as long as we, maybe the RFP for the windows is a, is a little bit of a different situation, but, you know, as you have identified things that are important, that need to be done at that building and you've had Dave available to do them, I think we've always been grateful of you for paying attention to that and understanding that we're spending money to deal with issues. So I don't, I'm not saying that this is, that I would expect that the select board would be micromanaging whoever might do this.
Well, I kind of.
Sorry, go ahead.
I kind of agree with what Dave says. You really, we don't really need a building person because we've already got people that go in to the church. Um, we've got some, well, once the committee for the round schoolhouse gets a little more organized, the Historical Society, they're supposed to be keeping track of the, the round schoolhouse. Um, because the building is leased at Suzie's Peanuts things. If there's a major problem there, she's gonna let you know that there's a leak in the ceiling. Mark is already on as a project property manager, is gonna look at the building when he goes in to do his studies. And he's gonna say, select board, uh, I noticed that the, um, back door is on its hinges. You know what I'm saying? I don't think a, one specific person needs to do duplicate work.
Understand what I'm saying?
I agree.
That's.
You know what I'm saying?
Oh, I understand. That's not something I thought about before, but that's a, that's a really good point and, you know, the committee takes care of it.
You're saying you're speaking to the listeners, in a way.
Not to, no, we're not.
No, I, I, I think there's, I think there is value in, because we have so many buildings at this point and because, as we know, at times, the advisory committees that may exist don't necessarily.
That's true.
Spend as much time and focus on it as we might like. I think there's value in having someone who.
Yeah.
Is, is a little bit focused on paying attention to them. I just think the scope of what the responsibilities.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Are for that person are pretty general.
That's okay.
And, and I don't think take the place of the relationship that the board has with the advisory committees. I think it's a, a separate, in my opinion.
Okay, but I'm, on infinite, I'm five years from now, that we have somebody that does what you said.
Yep, right.
That's what I'm asking. And, you know, all this, whatever. But suppose, Gwen, I'm sorry, just a second. You're supposed to, you said. This is what the job of that person would be to do.
I said he made a good point, so I, I.
You'd be watching, wait a minute, that person that really didn't meet, we've got a mission that I addressed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's the job of a building commissioner.
Doc, did you have something you wanted to?
I was just gonna say, sometimes when there's a change in committees, I was just, what you said made sense and, and I was like, one of the issues that we had with the fire insurance is like, we have to check fires, extinguishers. When Peter was running the meeting house, one of the things when we had his regular meetings monthly, he put in his minutes that the fire extinguishers were checked and shaken and signed off on. They probably haven't been done in six, eight months now. So those are the things that get overlooked, even though there's a committee that's in charge of the meeting house.
Right, yeah, they don't.
Those are the check, the checklist that was very important as a town's only responsibility.
Right. Well, and, and maybe it's also that, right, it is, though the, though the committees that, though we might have committees that focus some amount of time on certain buildings, they don't, they're not necessarily focused on the same things that we as a select board and the, who are responsible for the safety and insurance of those buildings might necessarily have on our thoughts. And this could perhaps be someone who's looking out for the town sort of, in a, in a way.
That's a point, that's a point, and this is a permanent position for five, 10 years.
I remiss.
So, so again, I guess I'd go back to, I would.
No.
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I think it should be changed. I mean, um, again, I guess I'd suggest that a couple of us work on redrafting it. Is anybody particularly interested in, I mean, I think, Bruce.
I already did, all right.
Okay.
I'll, if you want me to redo.
Well, I mean, I think it would be, I think it would be good for, I mean, I think you've given this more thought than most of us have. So I mean, I think it would be.
Um, but just a minute.
Good for you to be one of us.
Well, I'm not gonna review it right here, cause I'll be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could do that because it would make sense anyway, cause I will have to, before we kinda get to that June conversation, again, we're gonna have to need to sit down and look over the transactions that I need you guys to let me know.
So we can isolate this and that.
So we could look at the money and then you could kind of be like, hey, what is this? And come up with a couple of different options maybe.
Yeah, and the beauty of this is, again, we're not really under a time crunch to have this done for the next meeting or whatever. But that way, you guys can maybe have some conversations about it and do some things outside the context of a meeting.
But that isn't going on, not necessarily.
Okay. All right, so let's, so we're essentially tabling for a consider, consideration of that to, uh, in the time. Um, all right, and now we're down to summary reports. Mr. Tanza, from a town clerk's standpoint, what's.
The dog licensing is now in the penalty situation where there's late fees. We have a hundred, I think a hundred and ten dogs registered, there's maybe fifteen or twenty. One fifteen. And we probably have ten, fifteen dogs that aren't registered. At this point, we'll turn the list over to the animal control. to the animal control officer. We've made the calls, Gwen's made all the calls, done everything. So now it's out of our hands. It now goes to the animal control officer, who will have to make house calls and say, you know, if you don't have the dog licensed by the end of May, there's a $50 fine, and we can bring you to court. And, you know, that's unfortunate, but I think that's what we have to do.
I think what your animal control officer is going to do is going to write tickets for anyone who's not registered and just send them out.
That's your problem, for sure. But the, the technical problem is that the town clerk has to submit a report to the animal control officer, which we will do. We'll generate a report and give it to you, and then you will deem whatever's necessary for compliance.
Dot, didn't last year you sent out a small postcard and gave them another week or something to notify you whether they had the dog or didn't have the dog before you went into a major ticket process?
Have to go back and look, I can't, I don't...
Are you sure you sent out a postcard?
I would have sent out a postcard, would have sent out a letter with the dog's name on it.
Yeah.
Oh, we could do that, all right. With the step, okay, and then...
Because somebody came...
I'm going to check the ordinance to see how, what has changed it, because the ordinance is now, we've been marked, and it's in effect law right now. We've gone faster, 60 days. Dog, review the ordinance for those details and, and come in and meet with you, and, and maybe we'll have to do that step. Yep. I think that's, you think that's part of the ordinance.
Because somebody said, please don't send me a letter, I'll be in tomorrow.
Yes.
So they did get a late letter for something.
Okay.
What else, Scott?
The other, the other thing coming up is we have a school budget vote on the 30th of April, which is a Tuesday. There's an informationally implied to that. All that information is on a website. There's a sample ballot on the website. Again, the select board has members of the Board of Civil Authority. I will need somebody to help me count on that evening and also to work with us during the election day because I think Cynthia now is, you know, she's got some health issues, and she was always the go-to person. So we're going to need some help in, on April 30th, which is a Tuesday. We're here from 9:00 until 7:00 p.m. Then we have to bring them over to Leland and Gray at Comerland. Basically, at the end of 7:00 o'clock when the polls close, the Board of Civil Authority will count the ballots and make sure they correspond to the number that we have checked off on the checkoff list. It's one question, one count, very simple. It should take more than 15 or 20 minutes, but we need to have some people to do that.
In other words, he need, we need more than just me and I doing it, because I'm, I check them in, or check them out, or check them in. So we need, you know, some...
There should be a minimum of three people.
I'm favorable, Tom, so that I can be here at night.
Is there an absentee ballot for that?
Yes, absentee ballots are available right now. That was my next, we printed off the ballots this morning, yesterday morning. I have them in the vault, and anyone who's interested in absentee ballot, I certainly, you know, don't be hesitant to call us. You can call us, email us, whatever you want to do.
Come and get one vote.
Yep, so that takes care of that. And...
And then moving into road commissioner.
The road commissioner, this week has been a busy, last week's been pretty busy for Mark and I. We were met with Jeff Nugent, who's one of the, he's a senior planner with the Wyndham Regional Commission, and that was on the, the, sorry, municipal roads general permit grant. Basically, Act 64 requires the state to clean up all their waters, and the Wyndham Regional Commission is doing an inventory of all our erosion, all the erosion in roads that we have, and they're also doing a update on our culvert. This comes, we have, we've been, we've received the grant for $9,100. We've been able to secure that. We've made the initial payment. We've paid the permit fee. The only thing is that now we will have to sign a contract with Wyndham Regional that states at the end of the, this period, we will, we have to do the 20% of the grant, which would, he thinks it would cost the town about $4,000 or $5,000 to get this work done. The grant would cover that, but we have to make 20% cover. So if it was $4,000, the town would have to pay $800. And this is all part of, like I say, the Act 64 grant, the Act 64 compliance thing.
Yeah, Clean Water Act.
Yeah, Clean Water Act. And it's not something we can get away with, and it all ties in with FEMA grants and all the other things. So we met with Jeff Nugent for two hours. He gave us a map showing all the town roads and the spots where there are priorities and what we have to do. In the event, there's a segment of the road that's divided in segments. That segment needs to have some repairs. Instead of the town paying for it, there would be grant money to do that, and that's what part of this grant permit thing does. So that's, that's a good thing for the town. We all have to comply, so we don't really have much, much space to do anything about that. We also met today with Scott Jensen. We have some stream, some erosion, I'm sorry, some culverts that are stuffed with sediment. Mark can, he can go on with that, but anytime you go in the water, we have to contact the state, the Ministry of Natural Resources. I did call him the other day. They responded immediately. They were really a pleasant, pleasure to work with, so we're going with that. As far as the road, where we're going to do the paving, Mark had marked it off last year. We're going to revisit that this year, and it's going to be Hill Road, which definitely needs it, hasn't done a while. And there's a segment on the east end of Hill Road toward dumpsters, which will have to be addressed also. We have money in the budget to do that, and so we're okay with that. We're also going to do the crack and seal program, which we had started last year, but weather closed us out. We will schedule, have it done the first week in November, and then we had snow, and that was that. So that, and that's proven that it does give us a few more years on the roads. It really does work. And this company that did it for us last year was very good. He's the same price. I haven't spoken to him.
He's down to $3,000?
Yeah, it was $3,600, I believe. But that was for two days, or was it $3,600 for one day?
One day.
One day.
One mile.
Yeah, but we, we, we had scheduled it for two days because we had a lot of road that we thought, the first time we did it, we did it for one mile, and it proved so well that we decided to do it in a bigger area, and it will save the blacktop, the blackpink paving budget, so that's a good thing.
Guy, how much should we have the paving program right now?
Uh, $69,000, I believe, we'll have, $69,000 by June 30th.
Right, and then we can, then we...
And then we start the war.
We can tap into a 30...
Again, everything's contingent upon people paying their taxes and everything else. But we put $30,000 a year in the budget toward paving. And, and, you know, like I said, we're way at the bottom as a, as a match for the grant. The last one we did two years ago was $175,000, which was great. We've got a lot of bank for the buck that way, and we, as you noticed, our roads are in fairly good shape. But with the, the frost, the amount of frost that we have, roads don't last as long as they should. I'll let Mark touch base in regards to the dirt roads and so forth, but that's where we are with this. The RFP will do this week, and I'd like to get it out there. I'd like to have the work done before June 30th. I'd like to have it done before the road starts to deteriorate and before we have a lot of people coming in for holidays and so forth. So that's...
Are we running too late to put out the RFP for the paving? By waiting till next meeting?
We're going to have the draft for next meeting, and then at that point, you can vote on it.
We'll have it next meeting, and we'll put it in that weekend, so.
Yeah, if that suits the board. But I'd like to get it done sooner rather than later, because every time you wait a little long, then the companies, they have weather issues, equipment issues. So the, we have the funds to do it, and I, I think we should do it. The salt grant, we have a bid out there now. They have until the 30th of April to respond to that bid. I believe it's the 30th. We've had one company so far that has responded in regards to the salt shed bid. So that's moving. Marion Majors is taking care of that. She's our project manager. She's getting paid for doing all this, and we're in good shape that way. Guy?
Quick question, hang on a second, Bruce Joseph, did you have a question?
I was just curious in the crack and seal thing, how do they charge? Is it by, just by mile, or is it by...
No, they go by mile.
Oh, okay.
And they give you, they, 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 they don't leave, they count it from the time they get here to the time they leave, you know, that's, and they, they do one mile, or whatever they can do in that eight hour or nine hours. They're responsible traffic control, they're responsible for flappers and everything else. Also, by the way, in the, in the paving, I'd like to also consider having the shoulder work done by the company who does the paving, because they do a great job, they have the equipment, they have the material, and it just makes sense because we have to rent equipment to do that. We don't have any equipment to do that, so...
Now, the line seals stuff for $3,600 bucks, that comes out of the paving fund, correct?
That can come out of there, yes. It can, it can come out of there. But we also have money inside for, uh, uh, the vendors, summer, summer vendors.
Oh, then we can take it out of that.
Yeah. So I guess my thinking, the paving fund is a dedicated fund, and I'd like to keep that as high as possible. So if we could take the money from the summer vendors...
If we have it in summer contract services.
Of $39,000.
$39,000?
Yeah.
Okay, so they develop a $69 upfront until next year until people pay.
And we'll need some money, you know, for the salt shed. But I think everything's in good shape. Financially, we seem to be in good shape, and we have the third, we have the fourth quarter paying coming up, May 15th. And, um, no, we, we get, we have zero delinquent taxes, and I'd like to try for the fourth year. But, you know, it's, it's not always easy.
It's been three years now?
It's been three years. I don't think any town in the state of Vermont has that. But the bottom line is that it's not always easy. And the people who live here in town are the ones who get the credit for it, because they're the ones who realize their responsibility, and they realize that a small town is an expensive town to run. It's not as cheap as a big town. So that's all with the road commissioner. I'll let Mark touch base in regards to some of the things that I may have didn't talk about.
Awesome, thanks, Scott. Mark, what's, uh, what you're currently showing up?
Uh, basically, other than what Guy has said, you're...
Oh, yeah, we're lucky.
With our meetings, we're just getting things ready for summertime, all you got to work. But what I've been doing is monitoring roads for mud mainly, on the gravel sections, and, um, taking the grader out and just re-grading them as they need it. There's a lot of places that have dried up already and places that are just thawing out, so, um, I think we're on the downhill side of, of that. Picking up brush and debris from the windstorms, um, do a little maintenance to the grader, and that's about it. Just the meetings and general maintenance.
Great. Thank you for that. Okay, down to number 10, communications.
We're going to sit down on the world of course.
Don't take it.
Yeah, exactly. I've, I've learned better.
That was exciting, though, when you're on schedule.
There are a couple of emails that came through, which I pass around. One from the Valley Lions Club about their, uh, Green Up event that they're going to have up in Townsend again, which I'll just...
Can I just expand?
This note starts before Green Up Day is over, so it's slightly counterproductive.
She had called and left a lengthy voicemail, and then she called back and spoke to me again. And she asked if she could put a little sign by Round School House for the event that's going on.
There's going to be a scavenger hunt of some kind, and apparently the schoolhouse is one of the locations on scavenger. Anyway, there's the, the email, just so people are aware. Nothing really for us to do other than appreciate that they're putting that event together and hopefully the, hopefully that weekend won't be rainy like this week it's going to be. Then the, the second email that we have is from VLCT about a municipal energy survey that they're trying to get towns to do.
The reason I didn't respond to that is because small towns, a lot of that stuff doesn't, pertaining to small towns, and that's why I didn't really go...
Yeah, no, 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 and, and I, and I agree. I mean, I took a quick look at it. I guess what I'd say is, you know, we're under no obligation to do it. If it's, if, if it's the pleasure of the board, I would suggest that I will complete the survey based on what we may have in our town plan, and the vast majority of the questions not being applicable to us, but just to give them the feedback because I, I think it is valuable for them to get feedback from us, even though most of what they're looking for probably doesn't apply. Does, or anybody have any objection to that? I don't know.
Sounds good.
Complete the survey for them, because I feel bad because they keep sending emails every couple of days since obviously no one's done it.
You'll get used to the...
Yeah. Okay, so that was all of the email correspondence. We have no regular mail correspondence, but before we do the pay warrants, just a couple of things from the treasurer's. One of them is the Town and Highway Annual Financial Plan that we need to provide to VTrans, which they put together. The basic details are overall revenue and expense projections, and verifies that we're going to spend at least $300 per mile for the applicable roadways. So this is something that we all need to sign.
Blue, Marla.
Oh, I thought, sorry. I mean, this we could probably sign. And then the second thing, just to make, just to make people aware of is...
There's some charges, Jeff and Bruce, excuse me.
Just, that's all right. Just to make people aware of that we're putting paperwork into People's Bank to change the authorized names on the accounts to now be Danny Nystrom as opposed to Samara, and still to be Guy as the Assistant Treasurer. So Guy and I and Danny will sign those, and those will go to the bank on Friday, just so people are aware we're doing that. Okay, pay letters. I would make a motion that we accept and sign Accounts Payable Warrant 2019-40 dated April 17th in the amount of $4,466.68. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The discussion is ending around some review. I forgot to send these around before we did it. We'll let the motion sit while we...
That's AP or payroll?
That is AP.
I forgot my timer, my timer.
You want to go? You're never doing it anymore, are you?
Have you full chair and sit in front of us?
I noticed you didn't move your bed.
Kitchen, Doug? Wait, you're not leaving, are you?
Yeah.
Chris Webb commented to me today how he really likes the fact that you've come to every meeting so far.
Chris said that?
And he was like, a long time.
Say goodbye?
Oh, God.
Thanks, Dot, thanks.
He's like, withdraw. I can withdraw.
Night, Dot, thank you.
Okay, while those are going around, I'm just going to rattle off a few things for the agenda for May 1st. We will, again, put on considering changing the paper of record, because Joseph has done a little, done some additional research and learned some more about that. We'll have the paving RFP, which we'll vote on. I, will we be opening...
Yes.
...results for the design engine?
We're...
That's all taken by...
They're doing that outside. We don't, we don't do that in context of the meeting.
The software's all the binary, right?
Yes, yes, they're in...
So I guess I'd suggest that we put on a discussion about the Hill Road safety situation.
Yes.
I think while, so we don't waste too much time thinking about that, so we'll put that on.
Bruce, you're not going to be here next meeting?
That's correct. Well, so we have?
Well, we're going to discuss the safety situation at Hill Road.
No, you can do that on the 16th, and it...
So we can wait, because you, you're not here then, but you're here on the 15th. Okay, so we'll put that, so, sorry, sorry. So we want to do that for then, we'll... Okay, so we'll put that, so, so we want to do that for then, we'll, we'll do that. And when we do get to that, I'm also gonna reach out to Cynthia to invite her to come, I'm gonna reach out to Johnny to invite him to come. I know he has some thoughts on it, he and I have talked a little bit about it separately. He does, yeah, I mean, just, yeah.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, right, I'll let him.
Aren't you two different average businesses?
Yeah, yes.
My dad's, my dad's, she's my assistant when I need him.
That's what he thinks.
There are two average girls.
You just have two different middle names, okay.
Right, yeah, that's why.
I was like, I'm like, what is going on here?
That's why he's Emark.
Yeah, I'm Emark, Mark is my middle name.
Okay, I was like, what is going on? Having a moment.
So one other thing, we'll have a quick thing about greenup day, I suppose, since it'll be a couple of days away. And then I think we should also have a discussion about recycling costs. Because looking at Samara's latest financials, actually in a positive, potentially positive way, I know she said they weren't final through that period, and it's a little hard to tell about some of the timing, but we might not end up being as much over budget by the end of the year on the recycling as it looked like we were gonna be a month ago, maybe, but we're certain, we'll still definitely be over budget.
Was it the eighteenth? Oh, we're on, you're talking last year's budget, aren't you? You're talking about, you had a current, your June, which is twelve, isn't it?
Yeah.
Twelve thousand.
You got all that.
Was it twelve or fifteen?
I think it was twelve.
Okay.
It's eighteen for next year.
What'd you tell him, what's it, it's doing away?
Okay, let's just, sorry, to, to come back to this, just to get these done, and then we'll go back to that. No, no, I'm sorry, because I just, because I'm doing everything out of order. So just to restate the motion, there was a motion on approving the AP warrant, it's been seconded, no discussion. Okay, so all those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrant twenty nineteen dash forty dated April seventeenth in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that approves. Now, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Payroll Warrants twenty nineteen dash forty-one dated April sixteenth in the amount of four thousand, ninety dollars and sixty cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Payroll Warrants two zero one nine dash four one dated April sixteenth in the amount of four thousand and ninety dollars and sixty cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. So to get back just briefly to the recycling, so a month and a half ago, maybe, based on the numbers that we had at the time, it looked like we might end up being three thousand dollars over what we had budgeted. We budgeted twelve thousand dollars for this year, it looked like we might end up being at fifteen. Based on the last numbers, it looks like it might be maybe more like fourteen, or even under fourteen, maybe, but it's, it's hard to know, because there, it was at a kind of an odd time for the report, so... But in any event, we should have a discussion about it, just because we should start to prepare ourselves that we, you know, I mean, I think that we can, we'll be able to absorb that, and obviously, we've voted a great increase budget for next year, which...
Absorb it into that?
Um, well, we can't, yeah, well, we can't absorb it into that, but I mean, hopefully, if we're twenty-five hundred dollars over on that, we've been responsible enough in other areas of the general fund, but that doesn't end up being a problem as far as it, but, anyway. We can talk a little bit about it.
The next meeting is May first, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the one?
You've gone May first, right?
I am, and if you need a, if you need a, if something else happens, if you need a quorum, I'll call in.
Okay.
But I also, no idea what I'm doing on vacation yet, so I'm just not gonna, I, I mean, I was kinda saying I can call in, and if it's necessary, I totally can, but if you wanted to allow your agenda, and you guys can maintain the quorum without me calling in, then I'm happy to enjoy tuxedo.
Which I mean, really, at the moment, it is, it is, it is pretty late, it's voting on the paving RFP.
So it's those three.
Um, it's discussing favor, I mean, it, it is pretty late.
You can go ahead with the question topics, or you can go ahead with RFP and the paving.
Okay, so I think let's, let's assume that you're not calling in, but if there's some situation leading up, we'll, yeah.
The only thing is, I'm sorry, show you about that?
That was the whole sentence, it's over.
Excuse me. The only thing is, I'd like whoever wins the RFP to look at Sunnyland Daycare, just to see what it costs, if nothing else. I'll talk about Sunnyland Daycare, not anymore, Suzie's full.
No, to look at them, to evaluate them.
Yeah, to evaluate, what it would cost to do it, and whether we could do it or not, or we had to wait till some long time to do it, but...
So are you saying that you think we should build into the RFP paving that? Or we merely, because I can't imagine that anyone who we would ultimately award it to would be opposed to looking at it and giving us a separate idea of what it might cost.
But I'm, don't tell, yeah, don't tell him off of what Guy had to say, we're looking at sixty-nine thousand dollars, and if my memory strikes me correct, we pave, it's about ninety thousand dollars a mile, guesstimate, based on the past. With that being said, when I measure the length of distance between Grassy Brook Road, West River Lodge, and the little section of Sunnyland Daycare, I can go a little more, a fair more than six tenths of a mile. So that's right in your ballpark for your budget, which means we would have no extra money to do that, to do what we're talking about.
It depends on whether they wanna, they, they would charge to have to move their equipment.
They're gonna do it, they're right here.
Oh, because...
Yeah, they're gonna be decent across the street.
By the dumpster, oh, okay.
They'll be right across the street, so it's something to consider, it just, if we can do what we do, we can. If they say twenty thousand dollars, obviously not, but if it's, if it's not bad, maybe, and we have it, then we can, and we have the money.
Yeah, but it's, it's a little tough, until we get, until we open...
And see who it is.
Until we actually get pricing from people, how can we really know whether it's even something, you know what I mean?
What you're saying, if we select a person, then we can...
And then we have, can have a conversation with them about what that would take, and if they think that, yeah.
Right, but the important thing is the six tenths of a mile that you're talking about, yeah, okay.
Alright, anything else that anyone can think of at the moment for the agenda for the next meeting? Okay, and I'll send it out and obviously give you feedback if one of you does. Okay, anyone wanna make a motion about number thirteen?
Yeah, I moved to a, they adjourned, right, five minutes within, not a time.
I expect her second. Um, all those in favor of adjournings, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned at eight forty-seven.